To screw up. Okay. Call the meeting, yeah, we can go live, Jody?
Should be. Should we be going?
Good, okay, I'll call the regular meeting of council to order, six o'clock, December 21st, 2022.
Be it resolved that the agenda for the December 21st, 2022, regular meeting of council be approved?
Can I get a mover, please? Council Jarvis? Get a seconder, please, Council Gendron? All in favor? Carrie?
Be it hereby resolved that the following minutes be approved as circulated, November 18th, 2022, special meeting, November 24th, 2022, regular meeting, December 7th, 2022, special meeting, December 9th, 2022, special meeting?
Uh, can I get a mover, please? Council Kizlosky? Get a seconder, please, Council Gendron? Anybody, everybody had a chance to review the minutes? All in favor? Carrie?
Be it resolved that council establish the following portfolio and committee appointments?
Get a mover, please? Council Jarvis? Seconder, please, Council Hul. Okay, this is just for discussion at this point, we had talked about changing the appointments once we had our fifth counselor on, and Counselor Kizlosky has joined us, which is great. And we both, we have both the internal committees, the portfolios, as well as the external committees. And I know that there's a couple of changes in the external committees right now. The East Interlake Planning District that I've been sitting on has, have asked for a second counselor, not, not in case I can't make it, but in fact, they want two counselors from each RM or municipality at the meeting. And so I've asked Counselor Gendron if she wanted to be a part of that, and she agreed. And there's also the East Interlake Watershed District. And Counselor Jarvis was first assigned to that committee and has expressed that he's no longer interested in that committee. And so I have agreed to go on that and actually attended the last East Interlake Watershed District committee meeting, I think it was last week. So those two changes already stand, however, I would like to see Counselor Kizlosky representing us on some of the external committees and also on some of the portfolios. So I wanted to just open it up to discussion right now, we're not going to make any final decisions until the January meeting. But I wanted to start having some initial discussions. Now, one of my thoughts in terms of the portfolios was, after our meeting with Dolores from the MSO, she had talked about whether in fact we needed portfolios or not. And whether that was a good use of staff and council time. If our staff and managers are meeting with our CAO every week and keeping her up to date on what's happening, does it make sense to ask counselors to also set aside time for committee meetings to meet with each of their portfolios? And so I'm opening that up for discussion as well, whether we should continue to have those portfolios or not. And if we do, then how we want to proceed forward. Thoughts? Counsel Kizlosky?
Do we have to meet them any times with the CAO, once a week? Or we not have maybe once or twice a month? Or bring them in here and run a council?
Um, no, it's the CAO who meets with their staff every week. And that's important because the CAO actually is-
Is there a need to meet with the staff every week?
For the CAO, yes.
So it's, it's been past practice. Initially, as I get caught up with a lot of the files and past outstanding items, I, I don't know if every week it will be required. I think if it is at that point, it certainly won't take as long to do the refresher as it will right now. So right now, it is just getting a lot of the history, so although they're saying regarding whether it be well three or well two, right, there's a lot of history behind a lot of what's happening that I don't have. So I appreciate that being able to have those conversations of where we were, as to why we're at where we are and what that plan is. But going forward, that weekly meeting will be to be determined. And if it is, it certainly, I don't see it being as in-depth because with email communication a lot of the time, it is just a way of a, of a good follow-up that I can ensure that there are certain things on track. And sometimes there is the cross-reference between departments. So if our works or utility was working with recreation in something, or vice versa, the collaboration of having everyone at one time feeds off, feeds off that as part of not leaving something left unturned, right? So, so I, I, it's a little bit too new, so right now. So I, I don't know what that looks like going forward, but that has been what has happened past practice. I'm finding it beneficial at this point, like I said, but what that looks like going forward, to be determined.
Counsel Gendron?
So just to clarify for Counsel Kizlosky, we're not attending those meetings, that's not the meeting that's being referred to as us attending with our portfolios. And I'm, I'm going to be honest, I know that the expectation from Mayor Jackson when these committees were set was that we meet monthly with our portfolios so that we have an opportunity, and this was prior to our discussions with the MSO, was that we would be meeting monthly with our portfolios. I won't speak for others, but that has not been happening with me. They are meeting with the CAO weekly. Met once, just initially, and have not had the opportunity. So I'm not sure about the, whether it's necessary with what was said as the expectation of those committees, that we be meeting with them monthly, especially with them meeting with the CAO and sort of a better understanding from a council perspective of what is the CAO's role and what is mine as a counselor?
No, I just-
Oh, I thought you had your, no, you were just moving your hands around.
Massaging my face.
Massaging your face, okay. Counselor Hul, how many committee meetings are you having with Public Works, Recreation and Protective Environment and Public Health?
Minor, minor tickle over the phone.
So you, you and Counsel Jarvis aren't having committee meetings?
I work during the week, so I can't, I have to do my via phone call.
So then Counsel Jarvis, you did any of those committee meetings then?
No, while they don't take place, I was only the vice guy.
Okay. So... So then I guess I would put to council whether it would make sense in fact to not have the portfolios? If we're not, I mean, we're not meeting with them on a regular basis. We can't direct any of their work, all the direction comes from the CAO. The updates come from the CAO, and so then I question what usefulness it would be for us to have the portfolios besides taking up staff time telling us stuff that, that they're already telling our CAO. So I leave that for people to think about, and we can make a decision in January unless people have some ideas, some thoughts now in response?
Well, right now, we've had an awful lot of meetings, even as a, as a council, you know, like two, three, yeah, four or five a month.
Oh, yeah.
And then other things.
I know.
So I don't have a problem with visiting this again in the spring, depending what, and with the flooding and so on and so forth and all the other stuff that we had going on, so.
Counsel yourself.
It'd be an idea maybe to have the council present, the CAO and whatever manager. I know that might be a problem, maybe nighttime or whatever, some of us are working in that. Just so that the council, counselor knows what's going on and where are his troubles.
What the MSO said though, she said that some of the portfolios should stay in the bigger portfolios. She wasn't like the finance, you know, she, she thought those portfolios were part of the public works. I think, I think if we have a specific skill as well, you know, in, in whatever portfolio we're managing, helps also. Sometimes the communication, sometimes the managers feel less threatened to open up to council than they do the CAO and bring forth their questions too. There's a lot said about having portfolios.
Yeah.
You know, so, I, I, and another thing, I mean, you know, with, without portfolios, it was discussed with previous council that we would all have to know a little bit about everything as well. And, and that makes it tougher.
Well, I mean, part of, part of the issue for me is staff shouldn't be going to counselors. Staff should be going to their boss, which is the CAO.
Yep, sometimes they don't though, they're not comfortable.
Right, but then that's, but then that's between the CAO and the staff person to work out, because-
I'm just letting you know what happened.
Yeah, no, I know.
Yeah.
I know, but I'm just saying that puts the counselor in a pretty awkward position because the counselor can't direct.
We don't-
Can't tell them what to do, can't do any of those kinds of things, and so-
But we can bring that concern forward to the CAO. I mean, they're going to call us regardless, but I'm just saying, if our, if they feel comfortable with that particular portfolio, they may bring that question to council, they may, it has happened before.
Counsel Gendron?
I think in fairness to our new CAO, that's a, a fine line we need to walk. I understand that staff may have had issues in the past, but I just don't, I think we need to work on moving forward and not be putting ourselves in between our staff and our CAO. Staff are gonna, we have managers that, if, if it's a manager, they need to learn to have a level of comfort. And if we are running interference, we're not helping fostering a healthy work environment.
Okay, Counsel Hul?
I wasn't saying it was interference, it was simply a form, another form of communication for them.
Sorry, I, I, and by running interference, I just meant being in the middle of it, sorry, very, Counsel Hul, I didn't mean interfering. It was, I was using the term as an expression, not specifically, my apologies, it wasn't meant that way.
Okay.
I had a question, but it's, because I'm, and I don't know that I'm confused, I just want, like, if, if staff people are phoning it, even managers, hypothetical, Tim phones me at home, which has never happened. Wouldn't I, as a counselor though, say, refer her, like, what sort of dialogue are we having? Do you know what I mean, like? Like, it just seems, if, if, if there's an emergency situation and you're going through phone numbers, you know, yeah, you might want to- no, I'm talking like seriously an emergency, like if somebody, if somebody says, look, we're on fire or something like that, then you might want to, but under every other condition, it's like, excuse me, but we have somebody that you speak to. And, and what I don't want to happen, because, you know, because I, I mean, I, I walk a lot, and I bump into Tim, I bumped into Tyler the other day. And, and we talk golf and things, but like, I don't want people to say that they can't talk to me, you know what I mean? Like, if I, if I go walking by Tyler, then I want people, people to say, well, you know, because I always, Tyler and I have talked for years, because I know he's a golfer. You know what I mean, I just, I, I worry that maybe that would take place, I don't know.
Yeah, this, this isn't about not being able to talk, I mean, I run into Joe, I run into Tim, it's like, hey, how are the kids, how is the wife, you know, those kinds of things. This is about them calling us on council business and-
Right, well, I just wanted that clear, but yeah, that's why I want to make sure, because I've never received any of those calls.
But you're right.
But I bump into some people all the time.
Yeah, but if, if I were to get a call from any of the managers, for sure, I would say, why are you calling me about this, you need to talk to the CAO?
Well, yeah, but back to the emergency thing, I mean, if somebody's phoning me, maybe they've tried Sharon and they can't get ahold of her, maybe they've tried you and and they're just going through it, because they've got a problem, and they're starting to go through a phone directory.
Right, but that's the extraordinary.
Right, we want to make sure that we're being able to differentiate that.
Okay, so be prepared for our January Cal meeting to make a decision on this. And if, in fact, we decide to continue to have portfolios, then I'll spend some time thinking about who will be in charge of what portfolios, and we'll bring Counsel Kizlosky into the mix. Okay?
Do we need a resolution now for the Eastern Lake Planning District?
That's where we move into now the external committees. And so I guess the conversation needs to be, and the consideration needs to be for everybody here, is anybody who is currently on an external committee that is not working for them or isn't at a time when you can attend, whatever, those kinds of things, please let us know. And also Counsel Kizlosky, if you have particular external committees that you would be interested in sitting on, like, for example, we have the Winnipeg Beach Legion.
It's not you, is it?
What's that?
You weren't on the Legion, were you? I think I was.
Uh, it says here I'm on the Legion.
I know it does, but I think I'm on-
I was just going to suggest-
One at a time, please?
I was going to suggest giving that one to Larry, actually.
Okay, so one at a time. So Counsel Kizlosky, if in fact you're interested in, in being the council liaison with the Winnipeg Beach Legion, that would make sense. If there are other ones that also make sense to you, please come prepared to the January meeting to have that conversation.
Okay.
Okay, and other people, whichever external committees you're on, if some are not working out, not the right time, whatever, please come to our January meeting prepared to talk about your involvement on external committees. Counsel Gendron?
We have, jumping ahead a little bit into correspondence, there's something we can, we've seen here is Resource Council saying they're not aware of who is representing the town on the, um, it was my understanding that contact information went out from the office, asked about that at the time, I guess apparently it hasn't.
Okay.
So if, and I, I, my suggestion would be that it not just the changes be notified of who is, but probably everybody be notified?
That was going to be my next suggestion, because-
Yes, because we also had a, a comment from Interlake Tourist Associations-
Yeah.
-without any representation here, and so it sounds like they don't know who, who the rep is either. Counsel Hul, you wanted to say?
That's what I was going to say, because, again, you know, I'm on a couple of these committees and I've heard nothing from them or about them.
Okay, and so that's telling me that maybe they don't know that we've appointed people back in August. Okay, okay. Okay, so in the interim, we're not going to pass this resolution until the January Cal meeting, after we've all had a chance to consider and think about. So can we bring this forward to the January meeting?
It's tailored.
And in the interim, I will be doing the East Interlake Watershed District and the East Interlake Planning District until that happens. Comments? And we're not voting on this, right?
No, it's tailored.
Okay. Next.
Be it hereby resolved that council approves the committee reports as presented?
Is there any reason why we haven't gotten a Public Works or Utility or Fire Chief report?
Just need a mover and a second.
Oh, damn, I knew, sorry. Can I get a mover, please? Counselor Hul, sorry, seconder, please, Counsel Gendron? Counsel Hul?
Yeah, I, the reason why there's no other reports is I was told that they were requesting not, requested not to put reports in for this month. I don't know if that's, because I called my, my Public Works and Utilities and they were told not to have a report in for this month. I'm not sure if that's-
Uh, well, it's my understanding that usually the reports were for the Cal meetings initially. So that direction has not been provided by myself, so I'm not sure where that information was provided.
So should there be any reports on this then, if we're gonna?
So I think, so it was my understanding through the, through the, the managers' meeting, that it was usually the first meeting of each month when the, the reports were submitted. And so then for, with the, with the December, looking at year-end close, we did talk about having reports in place. And so Rec, Rec Department has provided that, you'll see the bylaw enforcement is more just about November, it's the previous month. So that could be why these reports aren't in place. I did receive an email today in reference to the Public Works report, but putting on us as an addition, I didn't think of it was of value without being able to actually review the report ahead of time.
Good, so the report that we do have is the bylaw enforcement report?
The MEC, Rec and Bylaw Enforcement.
The MEC, Rec and Bylaw, that's right. Everybody have a chance to review those reports? Questions, comments? All in favor? Carrie?
Be it hereby resolved that the correspondence be accepted as circu, as presented?
Mover, Counsel Gendron? Seconder? Counsel Kizlosky? Did everybody get a chance to read the correspondence?
Yep.
Any questions, comments, anything you want to highlight? My, we are quiet today, aren't we?
This is what number corresponds, number seven?
Yeah, 7.1.
Traffic ticket.
Pardon me?
Traffic ticket.
Okay.
Explanation, who handed out the ticket, why it was given to the town. Does a person driving not get any of the merits?
The, it's a red town registered vehicle, so does the top, is the town that gets issued the, the ticket as a result of that. It was based on cameras that the school buses have cameras installed. And so it was a certified provincial ticket.
Hand it by your bylaw officer here?
No, it's by-
By this group?
Yeah, it's by, well, it's by the, yeah, by the RCP, like, it's a, it's an actual traffic ticket.
Okay, so why is the beach the connected?
Parted.
Why is the beach paying for it?
Because the vehicle's registered to the town, it's not to the individual.
It doesn't matter, we've got fire trucks, fire cars in the city. If you're going over the speed limit or through a red light, if you're on a call, you pay for the ticket, not to see. And I'm sure that happens with a lot of private companies as well, if you're driving a taxi, et cetera, et cetera. So let's say again, is there a bylaw that says something that we pick up this ticket? Does this driver get off scum free, no benefits?
So there is no bylaw or policy in place, there's nothing in the collective bargaining agreement that referenced this as far as having ownership coming, paying through the, the ticket itself. I have no authority to charge the employee is stating they are responsible for the ticket.
Counsel Hul?
You know, the serious of this offense, is there going to be any repercussions or any further training or safety training or?
So I, I have met with one of the employees that I have not met with the employee who was driving at the time, as they are off on leave. The circumstance, I believe, is clear in the report. It was at a time of an emergent sewer break and at the time of driving, albeit not appropriate behavior. Looking at the severity, eyes were taken off the road to be looking at the ditch area, and it was just unnoticed. So it's clearly, clearly not an excuse, that is what happened, it was under extraordinary circumstances as the severity of the sewage in the close proximity to the lake was of great concern.
Counsel Kizlosky?
Just going to continue on further, with people going through place stop signs, radar tracks, the town's going to pay for it?
So that-
Does this cease?
So, so that is a discussion to be had. I, I know that when we, we look through that, looking at having some sort of policy in place, being in a unionized work environment, if we look at passing a policy where the driver of the vehicle who's incurred a ticket, the expectation is for that driver to pay that expense, I do expect there to be some level of union involvement, unless it's clearly identified in the collective bargaining unit agreement as well. It is something that can be looked at, I do not have past history as to whether or not how many instances have occurred. So this is the first one I am aware of. I did sit down with the individual at length discussing the situation. And as I stated upon the return of the other employee, we'll be doing similar.
Counsel Gendron?
First off, thank you very much for the report, as an explanation as to what was involved leading up to it. And just for clarification, if an individual receives a ticket in their own name, so if they're pulled over for speeding, that is not on us because it's in their name, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, it is only when, like, the cameras on the bus or red light cameras in the city or anything, we as a town have a responsibility to pay the ticket because it's in our name.
Correct.
Okay. And, and we currently do not have a policy that allows us to take, and I, and I do know some firsthand experience in a little bit of my discussion with you, it is, you're very strict on what you can deduct from an individual's payroll and what you cannot, correct?
That is fair.
So you do not have the authority to even be deducting this off the individual's paycheck.
I do not.
And without a policy, you didn't really have any other choice but to pay the ticket. So it's on the council to be making a policy in order, i- if we feel as a group that we do not want to be responsible for tickets that individuals get.
Correct, but that being said, we can, looking at council creating that policy, because it is dealing with deductions from an employee, the collective bargaining unit would need to be notified of that policy as well.
Okay, I just want to say, you know, the, the offense is significant, you know, driving by a school bus when they're supposed to be stopping. It was good to see, you know, kids weren't being discharged, nobody was in any kind of immediate threat. And I certainly understand that they're driving along in the ditches because they had a sewer break. While it's unfortunate that occurred, I also think that unless we continue to get these kinds of tickets or complaints, I'm not sure it's something that we have to add on. This might be a one-time only, and I, I trust our CAO has had very significant conversations with the people who were involved. I think that if we haven't, have a second situation, then certainly we might be needing to have a very different discussion. Counsel Hul?
Yeah, I agree with you, I think, I think it would be a different discussion though if a kid was ran over. So I think maybe if our employees were a little more, you know, if there was a financial penalty to their, you know, to their driving or something, you know, maybe they would have been paying a little more attention. The kids could have been offloading, and if he's looking in the ditches and didn't see a school bus with the lights, kids could have just all been in the front street, so I think it's important that we tackle this now and not wait for another incident.
Counsel Jarvis?
I, I agree, and I'll use the example, what if it been the school bus driver and there was been kids on the school bus and he just went through a stop sign? You know what I mean, like, right now, we have a situation where he's looking in the ditch and there's a school bus with the lights on, and we drive past the school bus, and as you said, luckily, nobody was hurt. But unless I'm wrong, you're supposed to be in complete control of your vehicle at all times, where that bus could have been parked in the middle of the road. If he hit the bus, he was at fault. We have to look at, and like Barry said, we have to have some sort of a plan, whether, if a child had been hit, heaven forbid, we'd be having a different conversation right now.
So what kind of plan are you suggesting? So what kind of plan are you suggesting, Councillor?
That we, we, I'm, I'm not sure what is involved, so I think maybe in the future we should have a look at it, because we have employees that drive vehicles and if they're, heaven forbid, but if you're running through stop signs and you're blowing past school buses with the lights on, then maybe we need to look at a policy that says, hey, we have a, a situation even in the middle of the summer where there's kids walking everywhere around here. And if you're looking at the ditches or something, all you need is a five-year-old bolted between two cars, there's a problem.
Councillor Hu?
Well, maybe it's just more of a having them take a defensive driving course or something?
Yeah, we need to have.
Because, I don't know.
Yeah, I, I agree, but I'm not saying that we let the guy off scot-free, I'm just saying that, you know, there's something that maybe we need to have a look at. We have people driving vehicles. G M.
Councillor Jendron? My understanding from reading the report is a discussion has happened and a serious discussion has happened. The CAO is responsible for the staff, um, the CAO has, uh, policies regarding, uh, when, if and when the CAO feels there's a need for a written warning to be placed on a per- that an employee's file, the CAO has that ability to do so. If the CAO in discussions, um, feels that, I mean, as she said, she doesn't know if this is the first offense or not, but if this is the first offense and the CAO was dealing with a second offense in three months, I would assume that the CAO would be dealing with it appropriately according to the situation at hand as opposed to having to have a separate policy.
Councillor Hu?
Well, I just wanna say on record that I think something should be done now, because if we don't, and this event does happen, I don't think our CAO must be responsible for it either. I think we need to, but like, that's a, that's a, if it was just driving, if it was a, a small offense, like, again, like speeding or whatever else, but somebody blowing through a flashing lights on a school bus, that's, that's as bad as it gets.
What do you suggest that we do, Councillor Hu?
Well, I suggest that, that the person needs a little refresher course or a defensive driving course. Or maybe if they, if they can't follow the rules and they're too distracted by a flashing lights on a school bus, maybe they shouldn't be driving our vehicles, because it's our liability.
Councillor Kizlosky?
I'd say that they're, they're in charge of that vehicle, all responsibility lays with them. If they would've hit a child coming out of that school bus or something, is that the beach at fault or the driver? Driver walks away scot-free. Once again, there's no demerits to this driver, goes on to the town, it's a pretty hefty fine. And I think that the individuals should be held accountable for their driving sins.
So in what kind of way, what, what action do you think the town should be taking?
That they pay responsible, they're in charge of that vehicle. Okay, now they pay for whatever happens. If they hit a ticket, they pay for it. Just like most of the private cities and the, most private companies in the city, private companies don't pay for you.
Councillor Hu?
Yeah, you are correct. We, we, I work for a unionized company, we have to sign out the vehicles and then when you sign out the vehicle, you aren't responsible for that vehicle. So, so maybe we need to adopt something where there's a sign-out policy in the vehicles, you know, they're responsible for it during that time. I mean, just something to look at, something to consider.
I'm wondering if our CEO can, uh, take this back for consideration and, and come up with a recommendation to council?
For sure.
Thank you.
So just one question, Councillor Hu, a defensive driving course, uh, was it, uh, under the presumption that the town would be paying for that defensive driving course or is the expectation for the employee?
Well, that's something we can discuss. I would just, again, based on the seriousness of the offense, uh, I think something needs to be done. I mean, we, we don't, we don't have, we don't have, um, the same rights the police or the RCP or the fire department does, you know, driving fast to a case or you're driving so fast you didn't notice? Or even, I mean, if you're that focused on the ditch, how lo- how long are you not looking what's in front of you? That's, that's scary. So it's just, it's concerning. And so I, I think some education is, is required, something.
Councillor Jarvis?
Um, did the driver in question receive demerits on their license?
No, 'cause it was based on very similar to, uh, red light camera. So you just get the, it's the license plate that's identified, not the driver. So it's the, who, it's under the vehicle, that's, that vehicle's red, the name under the registration of that license plate. If I'm using your car and I get a red light camera, you receive the ticket. And so that's, that's what's happened in this case as well.
And, and I know as councillor Jendron explained, that we've had a, you've had a conversation with this person, but so then, this person's not paying the fine and there's no demerits, so there's really no, other than the conversation that took place.
So I've had the conversation with the passenger, the driver was on, is on leave currently, and I have not been able to have that conversation with the driver at this time.
Councillor Kizlosky and then Councillor Hu?
Yeah, just to walk scope a little bit, do these people, the drivers, do they check their vehicles before they go? Well, the safer signals, lights, et cetera?
I believe pre-trips are required. Uh, I can certainly confirm with the works department that the pre-trips are being adhered to.
Councillor Hu?
They are being adhered to?
Yeah, like, that it is, I believe it is a requirement. I would be surprised if there wasn't a policy in place. I don't even think, so it's just a question as to whether or not, um, that it's be- being adhered to as in several places of employment. People get used to not doing the pre-trip, right? And I'm not saying that.
Maybe this can come up, the meetings that they have with you and you agree.
And I know I will be discussing that, yep.
Okay, so anything further going forward? Think we're pretty clear here? Okay. Anything else under correspondence? Councillor Jarvis?
The, uh, human resources practices employment thing that we just sent for?
Pardon me?
The, this is what G M was talking about before, like, in the, the municipal relations bulletin that was sent to us.
Yes, yes.
Uh, that was just for us to read and?
So what the council may notice as, as something different is, uh, whenever there's a bulletin put out by municipal relations as part of being, um, municipal government, uh, I will put that information out, um, just so everyone is aware of what, what the department is doing, as well as the other news releases that would pertain to our MLA or, uh, in this case, um, Minister Horton, as well as, uh, he lives within close proximity. And so when council works with various ministers or MLAs, I think it's important for you just to have some background as to what portfolio and what projects they are working on, um, so that when you do meet with them, that, that you've got some familiarity around, uh, what they've been doing.
Yeah, but this was the human resources practices employment. The only reason I asked the question is because, and councillor Jendron even alluded to it at the beginning of the meeting, said we've had this con- I just, is this the actual thing? Because we've talked about this two or three times.
Yeah, this is just a news bulletin that they've put out to everyone.
I thought maybe it was just, it was there to go.
So every municipality received that news bulletin, yeah.
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 Okay.
It's not specific to, to the town.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions about correspondence? Okay. Back to the resolution, all in favor? Carrie?
Be it hereby resolved that council approves the accounts payable being checks number two zero two two zero seven six one to number two zero two two zero eight two six and electronic payments issued between December first, twenty twenty-two and December thirty-first, twenty-two, totaling two hundred and four thousand, one hundred and six dollars and sixty-seven cents as circulated by the finance officer and reviewed by the finance committee.
I get a mover please? Councillor Jarvis? Seconder please? Councillor Jendron? Discussion? Councillor Jendron?
Yeah, um, I, sorry, Sharon, I raised this before, um, prior to you being here. Um, the resolution reads approved by the, uh, as reviewed by the finance committee and it's not. It's not the committee, it is a member of the finance committee, because Doug doesn't, who are concerned to do the checks, not him. So sometimes it may even be Mayor Jackson. Thank you.
Councillor Jarvis?
And maybe I, I missed the opportunity here, but the, this, I, I'm a little confused about the cascade recovery thing, the, the check that was issued for recycling. What is cascade?
Cascades is where the recycling actually gets processed, so we still have a processing fee as well.
So that's the stuff that they pick up?
Right, so our recycling gets picked up at a fee, however, to process that recycling, there's an additional fee on top of that.
Yeah, I was just shook up, thank you.
Councillor Kizlosky?
I wanted the checks on their cat impound fees, seven hundred and thirty-five dollars. What's that all there?
Uh, I would have to pull the item. Um, a lot of these expenditures occurred prior to me being here that, that were approved through there, so, uh, I can certainly follow up with that and send you that.
You'll have to find it?
I can go pull the check right now if you prefer.
Um, I believe that when, um, our bylaw officer is also doing animal control and when he's doing animal control and he picks up stray cats, there is a fee for the picking up of stray cats and then taking them to a compound where they are taken care of and that's the fee associated. Councillor Jendron and then Councillor Hu?
And, and there are very strict rules that he has to follow, so he ha- they have to be held for so many days and so that's why we're paying.
What we have to pay for?
Yep, we do, yeah.
Councillor Hu?
Yeah, I was gonna say that the mayor was exactly right with her comments. In fact, we've questioned this for a long time, but, and as councillor Jendron pointed out, that they do have to be held for a certain long time, they have to be fed the cat litter, it's, it is a big expense and, and usually the bylaw officer's the one that houses them.
So I can't see why, wouldn't make Beach would have to pay for that. There are no fees where they take them to that, they pay for it?
Councillor Jendron?
Um, it's, it, there's a whole animal control issue, not just us, I believe it's, uh, pro- uh, standards within the province. We've addressed this before. It's not anything we can do, not do. I, the, our only other option is to not be picking up stray cats and, and that's the only other way to avoid it.
Our CAO, want to just do something?
That's exactly what I was gonna say, it's in reference to that. Once, once you have, uh, service delivery standard or something identified out in your bylaw in reference to what you will or will not do for animal control, uh, several municipalities, have run into this situation, um, where we look at the cost of cats for enforcement purposes, uh, is cost prohibitive and they have removed cats being from there. So at that point, though, those municipalities are at risk for the stray cats and, and the abundance of.
Councillor Jarvis?
It's, uh, with, with everybody, so it's, it's, there's criteria, there's health regulations, all kinds of stuff and, and you can't get away from it.
Any further discussion on finances? All in favor? Carrie?
Be it hereby resolved that council approves the December twenty twenty-two employee payroll as circulated by the finance officer?
I get a mover please? Councillor Jarvis? Seconder please? Councillor Jendron? Has everybody had a chance to review this resolution? Any questions, comments, points of discussion? All in favor? Carrie?
Whereas in accordance with section one six three of the municipal act, uh, the council of the town of Winnipeg Beach have made interim estimates of all operating expenditures for the town for the periods of January first, twenty twenty-three until the adoption of the financial plan. Therefore, be hereby resolved that the following provisional estimates be hereby adopted. General government services, three hundred and fifty thousand, protective services, one hundred and fifty thousand, transportation services, four hundred and fifty thousand, environmental health, one hundred and fifty thousand, public health and welfare, ten thousand, environmental development, twenty thousand, economic development, twenty thousand, recreation and culture, one hundred and fifty thousand, fiscal services, fifty thousand, utility operating, one hundred and fifty thousand, total of, um, one million, four hundred and eighty thousand.
Can I get a mover please? Councillor Jendron? Seconder please? Councillor Kizlosky? Discussion? Okay. All in favor? Carrie?
Be it hereby resolved that council approve councillor Jendron to attend the Red River Basin Annual Conference being held at the Fort Gary Hotel in Winnipeg on January seventeenth to the nineteenth, twenty twenty-three at a cost of three hundred and thirty-eight dollars plus applicable taxes, out-of-pocket expenses and travel per diem.
Can I get a mover please? Councillor Kizlosky? A seconder please? Councillor Jarvis? Discussion? Councillor Jendron?
Hi, I have one question. It says, uh, applicable taxes, out-of-pocket expenses and travel per diem. Um, we have, um, uh, I'm not sure whether it's by law or, or that, um, entitles, um, hourly reimbursement as well, is that, who does part of this?
Correct, that's, that's what it's referring to, it's just recognizing.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Carrie?
Be it hereby resolved that the CAO be authorized to enter into a service agreement between the town of Winnipeg Beach and the Canadian Corp of Commissioners for disaster financial assistance support services?
Can I get a mover please? Councillor Jarvis? Seconder please? Councillor Jendron? Wonder if our CEO can give us a bit more information on this, please?
Um, so the service agreement, uh, through the disaster financial, uh, assistance program, um, the dollar figure amount, uh, is fairly significant for what's happened at Winnipeg Beach throughout, uh, this past year. As a result, those applications, uh, are rather time-consuming and very detailed. Um, the expense for the support services is also claimable against the disaster financial assistance. And so the way that that program works is once accepted, there's threshold, tiered thresholds of where the municipality is responsible for, uh, and after a certain period of, uh, a certain amount, a hundred percent of the costs are then covered through the DFA program once approved. And so in order to collect that data and ensure that nothing's been overlooked or missed, and working through that, um, recognizing the scope of, of what's happened, um, it's, it would be a, it's, since it's claimable expense, I think it would, and therefore reimbursable, uh, it, uh, it makes the most sense to move forward with commissioners.
Any questions, points of discussion? Councillor Jarvis?
Is this, does this compete with Don Eames and? Nothing. No, it's just separate, it's just.
This is to be able to make all of our claims. Well, this is to be able to make all our claims, so like, for example, the super sandbags, we get to charge provincial government for that, it's to make all the financial claims for reimbursement.
It's to get the money.
I wasn't sure, that's right.
Councillor Hu and then Councillor Jendron?
Is it more of just to have them do the paperwork? Because I thought, I, we, we had, we, we had this brought to us before previous council. The company that we deal with, when there is an emergency measures, I thought they handled most of that and helped us with the, those areas.
So I'm not familiar, uh, with what may have happened in the past. Uh, to date, there's been no movement on this DFA file and looking at the significant amount of money that has been spent in reference to this disaster, the sooner that this gets moved on, the better. So it is a bit different, it's an independent program. Uh, it's not in relations to emergency, uh, measures, it's in relation to disaster. And so what might've come forward, which I do believe there was payment for, was there is a mitigation and preparedness program that counters with the DFA program. And they are two separate programs but correlate with each other. So this is to make movement in reference to submitting the claims and going through that process to have those expenditures returned back to, eligible expenditures returned back to, to the town.
Councillor Jendron?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify for Councillor Jarvis and then it sort of fits in with Councillor Hu's said as well. Um, this was raised at a, a previous meeting and there was some discussion that might've been just before, um, and I had asked, uh, the acting CAO if, um, Napier could be hired to do this type of work and he had checked and they weren't, they were too busy, they didn't have the time to do it. Um, but he did explain to us at the time that a hundred percent of the cost of hiring somebody to prepare the paperwork for the province is a DFA expense that we can submit for, so we really aren't gonna be, we've long since hit our deductible, we really aren't gonna be out of pocket for it.
Yeah.
So, so would we, is this just something that we, we source these guys out or should we put something out for?
My understanding is he did, he was check, uh, the acting C A O had been checking around, and, um, it was a matter of, because of how much, how many areas were affected by disaster, it was difficult to even find anybody that was available by the time we were looking for somebody.
Yeah, I'm just, yeah, so my concern is just for entering an agreement, I'm just wondering if, if we should have, you know, sourced out more than one, uh, you know, one company.
So previous calls have been made and, uh, looking for various other options, uh, and as Counselor Gendron had stated, uh, very few people are interested as they are backlog with, uh, various other claims.
Other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Be it hereby resolved that the C A O be authorized to renew the service contract between the town of Winnipeg Beach and Muni Site for the Muniware Momentum License Services.
I don't have.
Oh, did I, sorry, did I say important? Oh, sorry, my bad.
Okay.
Whereas a request for donation has been received by the town of Winnipeg Beach, therefore be it resolved that council for the town of Winnipeg Beach authorize a donation in the amount of blank to Manitoba Crime Stoppers.
I get a mover, please. Counselor Hull. Seconder, please. Counselor Gendron. Discussion. Counselor Kizloski.
What do they do in the air without your force? Other than calling the air C N P?
Did you have the opportunity to read their letter to us?
Yeah.
So it looks like they haven't been able to do a lot in the last couple of years because of COVID, but they're putting, um, a program together and going to schools and local events, um, with information, they're also seeing on a signage project, um, so all I know is what's in the letter. Counselor Hull.
Um, I think we've had some other requests for donations, and we've, we're kinda, are we not strapped on this part right now for donations, or should we move this to next year?
So this is for a twenty twenty-three item?
Yeah.
Um, it is m- my recommendation at this point to be tabled for budget to determine, um, what is, what is being allocated, uh, there has been no past history of donating to Manitoba Crime Stoppers, uh, that I'm, that I'm aware of.
So you're suggesting we table it?
For budget.
Yeah, and we've had a number of other requests for donations this past fall, and so if we could put that all in the same, um, item for budget discussion, so that we can look at all of the requests that we get for twenty twenty-three.
So it was twenty twenty-three requests? Okay.
Well, it was twenty twenty-two requests, but they were coming in quite late in the year, so if we can look at them, so we know what to anticipate.
Okay.
Okay, so this will be tabled?
Correct.
Thank you. Muniware.
Be it hereby resolved that the C A O will be authorized to renew the service contract between the town of Winnipeg Beach and Muni Site for the Muniware Momentum License Services.
Can I get a mover, please? Counselor Jarvis. Get a seconder, please, Counselor Kizloski. Can you give us some information about this one, please? Sharon?
So this is, this is all of our programs that, uh, that governs our municipal activities, so it includes our tax, our utility, our accounts payable, it's, uh, our payroll, it's the ledger accounts, so, uh, this is quite, uh, there was an account conversion that occurred in, uh, twenty twenty-one, and this is the software program that we use, uh, they are looking to go into a three-year service agreement, uh, and, uh, that's what this item is for, is just authorizing the C A O to sign that service agreement, okay?
Discussion? All in favor? Carry.
Whereas section three six-five dash two of the municipal act provides that council may in any year designate the immediately preceding year or any earlier year as the year for which properties, the taxes in respect of which are in arrears for the year, must be offered for tax sale by auction to recover the tax arrears and costs, be it resolved that the designated year for the properties in arrears be offered by sale of auction, be twenty twenty-two, meaning all properties with outstanding taxes from the year twenty twenty-one or prior, and be it further resolved that in accordance with section three six-three dash one of the municipal act, costs shall be at the actual costs incurred by the municipalities for each parcel listed for the tax sale, plus an administration fee of fifty dollars per roll as set forth in the Manitoba Regulation fifty-nine-seven, if applicable, and be it further resolved that the tax sale bill, tax sale be held month day twenty twenty-three, that should read, and blank A M P M at our ta, at Chambers.
I get a mover, please. Counselor Kizloski. Seconder, please. Counselor Jarvis. Discussion, I wonder if Sharon you could, uh, talk to council what this is about?
Um, this is always a standard, uh, resolution, it's just in a way of, um, having legal authority to move the back taxes forward, so, um, several municipalities will also use the outsource of tax service that goes through that tax sale process, it's my understanding there has not been a tax sale auction in Winnipeg Beach, um, for quite some time, uh, I'm, but what this does do is give us the authority to move forward on any properties that do have outstanding taxes of twenty twenty-one or prior, uh, and set those properties up for auction.
Discussion? All in favor? Carry.
Whereas a request for refund has been given in regard to a rec hockey program, and whereas no rec refund policy has been adopted, therefore be it resolved that council approve slash do not approve a refund in the amount of.
Can I get a mover, please? Counselor Hull, a seconder. Counselor Gendron. Everybody get a chance to, um, review this? Discussion? Counselor Gendron.
So, uh, from the information provided, this, um, individual attended the program for a few weeks and then something else became available, so they did start the program?
They did start the program.
Counselor Hull.
Was the program full at the time?
Uh, I believe with this kind of structure, there, there is always room for additional users, I think it was an informal rec hockey program.
Counselor Jarvis?
Um, I, I guess if we're, if we're gonna vote, I would say no one refund.
Other questions or discussion, Counselor Gendron?
Yeah, uh, the program is started, um, you sign up for a, a yoga class, and you decide after three weeks you found something closer to home, the yoga instructor that you've paid for the classes isn't gonna give you your money back.
For all of us that put kids through hockey and that, I mean, this stuff happens, and lots of times it's a lot more money than this.
Further discussion? Okay, call the question, so we have to ask.
Therefore be it resolved that council do not approve a refund?
Period.
Period?
Yeah, all in favor? Opposed?
I was, I was hoping for a, uh, you know, partial.
Oh. Did you wanna speak to them?
Well, I just think, you know, you know, like, uh, Counselor Gendron had said, if, uh, you know, if they did attend some, I would certainly think that maybe a partial refund would be available, but that was, I also wanted to know if the class was full, cause if somebody else lost out an opportunity to join the class, you know, that's another, but if we're sure that it was just kind of a drop in.
I could clarify that, but I believe that there was still opportunity for others to still enroll, and it did not impact the program.
But again, the argument, if you sign up for a class and three or four classes, and you decide to take the class somewhere else, doesn't necessarily should get a refund on that class.
Yeah, uh, we're not dealing with, for medical reasons, the individual had to stop coming, or family relocated, and it wasn't, you know, they had to move to the city and it wasn't convenient to come here.
Okay. So we're ready to, to, um, vote on the resolution, be it resolved that council do not approve a refund? All in favor? Opposed? Carry.
Whereas a request has been presented to council to amend bylaw fifteen dash twenty-fifteen to permit food cart vendors without owning slash operating an additional food service establishment, and whereas sufficient data has not been obtained to initiate changes to existing legislation, and whereas the recommendation is to partake in a pilot project for information slash impact gathering purposes, therefore be it hereby resolved that council authorize the C A O to implement a pilot project allowing a food cart vendor for the twenty twenty-three season at the farmer's market location only.
Move her, please. Counselor Kizloski. Seconder, please. Counselor Gendron. Discussion. I assume everybody had a chance to read the, um, history, discussion, options, and recommendations. Discussion?
Yeah, you had it.
Yeah, well, I was just curious, you know, how come we wouldn't expand this, or we just, like, the food, so that you're talking about that market that we have, that?
Yellow one in the rec center, side over.
Okay.
Yeah.
Hold that one, alright, that's fine.
Counselor Gendron.
Um, just wondering if the C A O could give us a little bit of, and I might be a little ahead of game, sort of what sort of things you're gonna be looking for as far as a thing of pilot, and, and what sort of things you're gonna wanna be, that you think might be relevant to report back to council, or am I a little early on this, and you'll put that together and let us know closer to?
So I think that, so my understanding is, um, the most sensitive piece of allowing food carts, uh, is within the downtown area and the competition to existing establishments, food service establishments, and so when, when we look at what that pilot project looked like, there's, there's a few issues, is A, is, is there sufficient data to see that there is, there is an impact, B, it allows for, uh, council and staff to take a look at the other possible impacts that having a food cart in the vicinity, um, can have, that, that we may not have thought about, right, is when we look at that, and then B, take a look at some of those impacts and bring that forward to discussion, uh, normally a food cart vending, uh, is not lumped in with another bylaw, it does have its own specific bylaw, and so my recommendation moving forward would be to be removing that out of, um, bylaw fifteen dash twenty fifteen, if it was to be permitted, um, as there's other things, so then it also gives council the freedom to take a look at locations, uh, more time to digest, does it work, doesn't it work, um, what the feedback from the community is, uh, cause ultimately that's, uh, that's a huge driver in, in making change in legislation.
Counselor Hull.
Yeah, this, this expands on my first question about, you know, expanding it beyond where they are, because, um, I, I don't know if any of you have, but we've got numerous emails and requests over the years, you know, if we have a ban due till ten, eleven o'clock, there's not a restaurant site that can provide a service, so we also talked about having the food carts, you know, uh, available within the downtown area, you know, because again, we can all, we all know that after six o'clock or seven o'clock sometimes, there's nowhere to get a meal, or, or a quick bite during bans, or, with the exception of, uh, boardwalk days, so maybe something we can sort of push out a little further on.
Counselor Jarvis?
I thought that we had discussed, um, designating, like, we tabled this previously, designating an area for food carts, cause well, I, I, I think we're gonna get into a really bad situation if we allow food carts there, food carts here, you know, and, and I don't think the problem is having the food cart, or food vendors, um, the problem is, and, and, and they're right, if we need separate legislation for it, is that, as we discussed previously, that, you know, there has to be some sort of concern for sanitation, for washrooms, for seating areas, for garbage, like, you know what I mean, i- if we, we have to have criteria that these people have to, to adhere to, and it's not so much that the other businesses aren't complacent, it's that we all have to fall under the same guidelines, and right now we have, seem to have separate guidelines for food carts or vendors.
So what are you suggesting in terms of this, this particular resolution?
I would say we need to look at, I, I don't, I'm opposed to pop-up food carts, because it just, it, it.
This isn't pop-up, this is somebody who's asking us permission to have a food cart at the farmer's market.
Exactly, but then, you know, do they have washing facilities there, do they have garbage receptacles, do they have picnic tables, you know what I mean, uh, w- w- we get that already, where people just walking along and discard poutine containers and all kinds of stuff, like, I think from our standpoint is that, you know, trying to solve maybe a concern that somebody doesn't have a meal, or they can't take a break, and so on and so forth, I mean, we create another problem.
Counselor Hull.
Sorry, so, so is your suggestion, like, again, having an expanded one, or is your concern just with the farmer's market, so?
Um, well, they, just with the farm, well, with the farmer's market at per se, cause we had talked about putting a, a, an area where all the food carts and all the, call them food trucks or whatever, would go, um, my fear is, and they, they mentioned about Winnipeg, and, and I'm familiar with Winnipeg, is that you're given an area in Winnipeg, you just can't just indiscriminately put a, a food cart somewhere.
Right.
Go ahead.
Counselor Gendron.
So, all of these thi, my understanding is, all of these things that have been raised by Counselor Jarvis and Counselor Hull are things that will be taken into consideration. Right now, we are looking at permitting a food cart at the farmer's market to, as a pilot project, to see how does it go, how's it received, what are the things we need to consider moving forward, and let's say based on it, we decide that, yes, we're gonna move forward and expand the use of food carts, what things have we learned and are learning from the food cart at the farmer's market, as far as things we need to consider as far as washrooms and receptacles, this is the, I mean, these are the individuals running the farmer's markets who are, are making this request for at their farmer's market, well, we know they have, I mean, they already have portable washrooms there, and they have, uh, you know, they have little seating areas for people there, so this is just authorizing the, um, C A O to implement a pilot project, is what we're looking at here.
Counselor Hull.
Uh, uh, again, I would, I would, rather than just seeing a pilot project, I'd like to see a, an expanded, uh, throughout the town, if, cause you're, we're not gonna get a full taste of what's happening in the farmer's market, or what's gonna affect the rest of town.
Well, it would, it would seem to me that before we do that, we might wanna do a bit more homework, however.
That's my point.
Pardon me?
That's my point, I think we need to look at this a little better than just, you know, have a pilot project thrown out there, I think we need to sort of look at this a little better.
Isn't that the purpose of a pilot project, so that we can look at things and?
Again, I'm not, I don't, I don't think we should just have the pilot project at the farmer's market, it's about the town, I think we should look at it for the whole town, not just the farmer's market.
Okay, so you're, you're saying, yes, we, we should do a pilot project, but not just at the farmer's market?
I'm saying it should be expanded.
Okay.
Counselor Jarvis?
And just to clarify my position on it, um, we had this, I thought we had discussed a lot of this stuff with refer, and, and, and that's maybe where I'm confused, is it about having food trucks, et cetera, and what I don't want to get, and, you know, every time we have a farmer's market, or a, a special event, and even like a harvest fest, where we have things that on, all of a sudden, there's a different set of rules for these, where you're able to have food carts in the farmer's market, I think we need to look at it as a town, if you're gonna let some of these people in, um, they have to, as I'd mentioned before, their criteria has to meet, there's health standards, there's all kinds of things, safety and so on and so forth, that these people have, and I don't want to forfeit that, um, and I don't know if responsibility is right, because they're within, we've given them permission to do that, and I wanna make sure that all of the checkpoints are, are looked after.
Right, and Counselor Jarvis, we have had this conversation before, and I think that the conversation has sort of gone in circles in a similar way that is happening tonight, and I think that, um, some discussion was had about the fact that every food cart would have to be licensed, and if they're licensed, that means that they're insured, and so that's already taken care of in terms of health concerns and all those kinds of things. And so that's already taken care of in terms of health concerns and all those kinds of things. We've always gotten stuck on, should we let one in and use it as a pilot project? Should we just open it up completely? Before we open it up completely, should we be sitting and talking to the other businesses in town? What should we do? And we've gone in circles around that with no decision being made. And so, um, I think this was the opportunity when someone approached our C A O saying, could we have a food cart next year, so not saying next weekend? They're saying, next year, can we have a food cart available at the farmer's market? Now, we might want to expand that to include other things. At some point, we're not creating policy here. We're, we're saying either yes or no to this food cart at the food truck and, at the, at the farmer's market. And if this council thinks it's important that we look at food trucks downtown Winnipeg Beach for twenty twenty-three before doing this pilot project, we can certainly put that on an agenda and have a full discussion about that and ask our C A O to come up with policy and those kinds of things. That doesn't prohibit us voting on this right now. Those are my, my thoughts right now, Counselor Hull, and then Counselor Jendron.
Yeah, I agree with your thoughts. I think we need to, but I, I, I do think we need to look at the town as a whole before we agree to this. That's, that's my opinion.
So, so just a point of clarification for myself, when we're looking at a town of a whole, how will that inform this decision about this food cart?
Well, I don't, I, I can't agree on this yet unless we do it as a, as a town thing. I understand that this is for the farmer's market, but this opens up other doors. I think we have to have further discussions.
Counselor Jendron?
Um, so, um, I don't know, I, I, sorry, I'm just a little not clear on what was discussed about this with this council and what was discussed about this before. This farmer's market request came to the previous council and they chose to table it, didn't want to make a decision, and tabled it for the new council. So I'm not sure if this council has seen this farmer's market request, but it was put in quite some time ago. My question is, if we go with this, um, pilot project for the farmer's market, we're not limiting ourselves to that, are we? If we have time for additional discussion to, to test it out in other areas, can we do that as well? Or are we limiting ourselves? Because I certainly, Counselor Hull's making some really good points about, we've discussed this before about other areas. Are we limiting ourselves to just this? Or can we do other, um, testing or, or whatever to determine whether or not we can do it downtown as well?
So that, that option is available. Um, when we look at the way that this is reading now in reference to that particular location and that location only at this time, it prohibits, it prohibits from anyone else saying, well, you've allowed that. This, it's not as if you're changing your legislation. The current legislation still is intact, whereas food vendors are still authorized under bylaw fifteen dash twenty fifteen, provide, you know, with providing that they own or operate an additional food service establishment. So that, that existing legislation is in existence. This resolution does not amend that legislation. This is just allowing for a, basically a one-year, this is not allowing that farmer's market on a continual basis to continue to operate. This is just in order to, A, get the resident feedback as to whether or not, um, food cart vendors is something that they want within the community. If there is another opportunity to have, um, so the ideal with this as a pilot project is it's consistent. So we know that, that it's there every, every weekend, it's not sporadic, so it's easy to, to monitor to some extent. If there is another option to be looking at after hours food cart, if, if a lot of challenges do not surface and a lot of perceptions are debunked at that point, because there is some sensitivity with, with this. Uh, and if some of those concerns are alleviated and it seems to be working really well, expanding for a downtown area, what does that look like? At any time, council can deliberate and look at what can be permitted and what cannot be permitted and adjust legislation accordingly. If there is the opportunity for a downtown after-hours, um, vendor as well as to further expand within this option before permanently changing legislation, one hundred percent council can enter into it.
Okay, so we're not limiting ourselves to just this.
Correct.
We could, after further discussion, decide, okay, and maybe we'd like to pilot food vendors on ban stand nights and see how that goes before we change the legislation.
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor?
Have we had food vendors knocking at our door? Quite, quite a few though?
We have had food, food vendors in the past, yes.
As well as, as well as the public requesting it.
Counselor Jarkus?
And, and I, it's not that we're, I, I'm not against food carts and I'm not against food trucks. I'm not against any of those things, but my concern has always been who controls it? Now, do we control it or do we, by, when I say as a pilot project, do we give it to the farmer's market? Because there's a, there's an awful lot of criteria, and there's an awful lot of standards and rules and regulations and policies and procedures that apply to these things. And are we going to be able to have input into that? It's one thing to have a pilot project and say, okay, you go ahead and do that, but if we have, if we stand back and then we watch things happen and they shouldn't happen that way, how do we, how do we interact into that?
Correct, so, so this resolution is just authorizing the C A O to move forward to create that level of agreement with that organization. And so when we look at the, um, looking at other past legislation and bylaws that other communities have governed food cart vendors, proof of insurance, all of those things would be part and parcel as to the agreement that must be provided. And so at that point, it is, it's not as simple as this resolution is passed and it's a done deal. So now it's then this is initiating it, looking at what that agreement looks like, looking at the requirements that council wants to have as part of the provisions, as part of this project. That still needs to be determined at that point.
Counselor Hull?
So in here, it doesn't mention, excuse me, uh, times of operation. Does that, does this mean that they can only operate while the farmer's market is open? Or they can, can they use those grounds when there is no farmer's market happening?
So it was, it was based on the assumption that when the farmer's market was happening.
Yeah, the assumption part scares me.
So, so currently, I can look at changing as part of the park project, and that's where, again, this is just initiating a pilot project, it's not outlining the project itself. And so when we look at specifics such as requirements, times of operation, that's outlined in the agreement. This is just initiating the fact of moving forward on, on saying, yes, we're going to allow this. What does this pilot project look like?
Yeah, I, I, I would just like to see it as a whole, as a whole.
Can I understand that you, you would like this, so you could move forward with starting to have some initial discussions?
Uh, it's not so much I'm, I would like this, this is up to council to decide if they would like this. Uh, this is an option for council to look at having a food cart, um, operating without the current provisions of bylaw fifteen dash twenty fifteen, without permanently changing legislation.
Counselor Jendron?
I promised my last comment on this.
Okay.
I think this is a nice, controllable matter in which, um, gives us an opportunity to, um, look at, A, what's important to us for requirements? B, um, testing them out, testing the waters on what we're looking for. Um, again, in a controllable manner, so that if at the end of the pilot or even maybe partway through the pilot, if it's very successful, we want to start looking at changing. We have, um, some good groundwork to help us change our legislation if that's the route we're going in. As opposed to spreading it all out and, well, these are the issues here and those are the issues there. And, and then we're just, I envision us having to look at so much and, and, and not being able to maintain our focus and change that we may want to see happen, not happening because we've not done an in-depth look that's manageable initially.
Well, one of the things that occurs to me that if, if this happens, and if our C A O can figure out a policy with them, policies and procedures and what they would have to follow and what that would look like, then we would have a template with which we could be sitting down with our local businesses and saying, we're thinking about getting food carts in here and these are the policies and procedures they would have to follow so that we're not just going to them empty hands, saying, well, we're not quite sure how they would run it, what they would run it, and, and what the policies would be. Counselor Hull? Counselor Hull?
Yeah, just adding to what you said there, like, again, this is for the farmer's market. We're not going to have a whole lot of leverage here once we agree with this, too. It's, it's, if we agree with food carts, it's, it's, the farmer's market food carts have nothing to do with the town. What kind of leverage do we have if, if something's going south, if there's a bunch of complaints from the, from the local business owners? What, like, we don't have a whole lot of grit here to sink our teeth into if something's not going right.
So that's where it would be when you're looking for the grit that would be identified in the agreement that would need to be signed by this as a pilot project, the agreement. In order to say, these are our expectations. This is if, if there is X amount of, or problematic, let's say with litter. You could have a provision within that agreement that if there is, um, a significant increase in litter, uh, that the agreement can be terminated and it will no longer be permitted for the rest of the season.
But maybe that should have been put on the table before, like, you know?
Include it in the resolution.
I just think it's too early.
Counselor Jarkus?
And I just want to clarify what you're saying, because, and, and like Gene, this will be the last thing I said, I'd say. We are going to establish the criteria for the farmer's market, for their food vendor. Like, we're going to say, here is what, our pilot project will include this, you need to have this, this, the. So we're going to establish that criteria.
That's correct.
Otherwise, they don't get a food cart.
Correct.
Okay, fine, I just wanted to, I, yeah, and, and again, that was my fear, is that, you know, if we pass, I don't like the two thousand and fifteen bylaw any more than anybody else, and I think sometimes we badger the local businesses. They're not against food carts either, but we want to make sure that we're all playing by the same rules. If you're allowed to, you know, take a penalty and I'm not allowed to take a penalty, then it's two different sets of rules.
Correct, and, and that's why, that's why food cart vendors generally have their own bylaw itself that clearly outlines, and it can be as specific as each municipality chooses.
Well, they mentioned one thing about City Winnipeg, a game I've mentioned before. The city of Winnipeg has a whole different ballgame, including common laws and everything. Your carts have to go where they tell you to go, the, the criteria is crippling.
As well as the cost. So right now, as part of through this, the way that legislation is written, a food cart vendor would be subject to the seventy-five dollar, um, business license that, that every other business is. So in the city of Winnipeg, to operate a food cart at a specific location that the city has identified, those costs to have that through the season can range anywhere between twenty-five hundred and thirty-five hundred dollars per year.
Right, and there's all, there's also, sorry to interrupt, but there's also things where you have to bring your cart to their parking lot and they, they store it for you and they check all that. The city of Winnipeg does that, it has nothing to do with the farmer's market.
Correct, and so that's where, when we look at how in-depth legislation goes without really just stepping a little bit into, to what, what is valuable. We are not the city of Winnipeg, and so those rules and regulations may not fit here. And so it's what is the fit here? Is the, so when we look at the downtown area, is part of that bylaw saying, you know what? Food cart's permitted after hours. And do, and then do those locations still need to require, um, portable washrooms? Like, and so there's lots to think about before really actually sitting down and, and writing formal legislation that's just going to be permitted, and once it's permitted, any, how many are permitted? So there's lots of things for council to consider when looking at this. And so this is a way to address, from what I understand, an identified need where there has been several requests being, being made in a controlled environment where we can monitor some of the problem areas um, with minimal impact, um, to legislation and therefore minimizing any risk of, well, if they are allowed, why can't I? Because it's specifically outlined by a signed public agreement under a pilot project without change of legislation.
Counselor Hull?
Yeah, I just want to have a recorded vote on this one, if you can, please.
Yep.
Thanks.
So is it possible then, as a way of starting, that, um, our C A O could bring to us the outline of an agreement that we would enter into or that we would present to the farmer's market? I think that's where people are getting hung up.
So we can change the resolution for the, therefore be it resolved that council authorize the C A O to present a pilot project, allowing food cart to present. A pilot project allowing a food cart vendor for the twenty twenty-three season at the farmer's market law location only. Uh, present a pilot project for council approval. For... So therefore, be it hereby resolved that council authorize the C A O to present for council approval, a pilot project allowing a food cart vendor at the twenty twenty-three season at the farmer's market location only. So therefore, this resolution will allow me to work within, um, creating a bit of a template agreement for council review to see if there are amendments to what's being proposed and have that in prior to then initiating the project itself.
Is there any plan to talk with other businesses before we agree to something like this? Like in an open forum, maybe?
So, so when we looked at, at this particular things, it's my understanding that the businesses that were impacted were in the downtown area, and because this location is not within that downtown area, the intent is offering this locate, this pilot project, one vendor only, not in the downtown area, to open those discussions for changing, permanently changing legislation and therefore involving local businesses.
Counselor Kozlowski?
So if we don't make this resolution for not only the farmer's market, but the whole town of Winnipeg Beach, when are we going to revisit that again? Is there going to be time to revisit in the summer to include the rest of the beach area? Example, Bastan.
That's one of the things I was going to suggest is that once we have a look at, um, the recommendations in terms of this pilot project, whether we should be putting on, um, our agenda for February or March to have a full discussion about the process to look at food vendors downtown. And that, and part of that process, I think, would be meeting with the, with the local businesses. Having some discussion with them about some of the concerns about not having access to food and coffee and stuff during evenings or Sunday afternoons, those kinds of things. And having a full discussion about food vendors. Counselor Jarkus?
Is it possible to have this, um, what you described with the resolution in, within the next thirty to sixty days at the next meeting or the second next meeting?
I, absolutely.
Yeah, so that we can, yeah, like, if we're going to, the way you just read the resolution, if, example, in January, third week of January, we have this ready to discuss it. But I, I, and I think we can probably get a few business people involved in it if you want to, and heaven forbid that I said the word special meeting, but, um, if you want to get some sort of a meeting together with three or four people, then, and get them to establish criteria.
But we're talking about two different things.
No, I think we're talking the same thing, about food carts.
Right, but what I'm, but what I'm saying is that, is this is about putting together policy, policies and plans for the food cart at the farmer's market, where, you know? And once we take a look at some of those preliminary policies and procedures, then having a fuller discussion about what we want to do with downtown Winnipeg Beach. And that would include talking to restaurants and business owners down here.
No, I understood.
Okay, so my question is, once we agree to this, are we saying to the, the farmer's market, they can have vendors?
We are saying our C A O can put together a policy and procedure that she'll bring back to council.
We're going to establish a criteria.
And it's not actually a policy and a procedure, it is an outline of the pilot project and things that are going to be considered for the pilot project. And the whole idea behind a pilot project is you learn from it. And you learn things that you have in there maybe don't work or aren't necessary and things that you might have missed need to be added. So I am seeing this resolution as a start to, but a, a start in a controlled manner that, you know, instead of that, you know, instead of, that we can learn from and grow from. And, and from there, then, so let's just hypothetically say it all gets put together, everything's on there that council agrees with, and then it's a go. We have separate discussions, what I'm understanding from Mayor Jackson is, which then lead to separate discussions that could involve the business community about, and how can we move forward downtown?
Right, so why don't we?
Well, and that's my point, that with any pilot project, you usually have later research before you, you know, you might try something and then fall off the cliff.
And that's what we're doing.
Don't interrupt. What I think we need to do is, again, get the businesses involved before, because they might come up with some really good ideas as well that we can put into this pilot project before we. I, I'm just saying, it's, it's middle of winter time, nobody, like, it might be the time to do it.
So it would seem to me that we are going around in circles and sort of saying the same thing over and over again.
We're saying two different things, Jim.
So, so I'm wondering whether we can simply go to vote on this and either pass it or not.
Or table.
Or table. So this is to authorize the C A O to present for council approval procedures around pilot project for a food cart vendor in the farmer's market location. And I understand that a recorded vote was requested?
Yes.
Okay, so all in favor? And opposed?
Prefer table.
Okay, carried.
Be it hereby resolved that the C A O be authorized to sign the service contract between the town of Winnipeg Beach and Stereocycle Shred It for shredding services.
Move her, please. Counselor Jarvis. Seconder, please, Counselor Kozlowski. Discussion. Discussion, anybody? All in favor? Carried.
So rental agreement use of facility, just the C A O report and current rental agreement. There is no resolution at this time that I could think of for council. However, if, after reviewing that, council would want to set direction to the C A O?
I think that we probably need to have a clearer understanding with the rentor in terms of the function and use of the facility. And I understand we probably can't change it now because we've, we've signed it until October 2024, is that correct?
That's correct. However, agreements can be amended if both parties are...
Okay. This is not the first time that we've had some concerns about having different functions happening on the, on the main level of the rec center while the county was open. And so I think that we're going to need some further clarity to the agreement. What do other people think? Counselor Jarvis.
Are we talking about to the letter that was sent to the C A O about this? Because I think, you know, it's the cost of doing business. You know what I mean? Like, I don't want to complain, but I mean, we probably do things like parking and so on and so forth. But that happens all the time. Every time they close Main Street for a function, there's a dozen businesses down there that are affected. You know what I mean? I just think it's, it's craziness. Like even Boardwalk Days shuts the place down for five straight days. You know, like.
Other people, in terms of this particular issue? Counselor General?
I have to agree with Counselor Jarvis. I also noticed that there were things included in that letter to the C A O that aren't part of the agreement, so I'm not sure where the expectation comes from.
There you go. And I know this is going to be like a humorous part, but parking, big deal. I talk about it all the time, you know what I mean? It's crazy.
I didn't get it all this morning.
Why, how to get on it?
I was waiting, I was wondering when you were...
You know what I mean? But, and, and back, like, to back up Gene who backed up me, is that it's the cost of doing business. You know what I mean? Like Barry himself has said that, you know, he knows people that don't come downtown in the middle of the summer. It's a hot Saturday because they can't, they, they won't get into business. Things happen.
Good.
Other, other comments about this? Thank you.
So to clarify, no further action by the C A O?
I want that side.
Be it hereby resolved that council move in camera at 7:35 P M. to discuss matters that are in the preliminary stages. And further be it resolved that any matters discussed while in camera are held confidential until such time is discussed in open council.
Move her, please. Counselor Ho. Seconder, please, Counselor Jarvis. All in favor? Carried.
Be it hereby resolved that counsel moves out of camera at nine forty P M. and or eight forty P M. and resumes the regular meeting of counsel?
Can I get a mover please? Counselor Hull, seconder Counselor Jarvis. All in favor? Carrie.
Be it hereby resolved that counsel does adjourn at eight forty P M. to meet again on January eleventh, twenty twenty-three at six P M. for the committee of the whole meeting?
Can you move her please? Counselor Jarvis.